Sir.
Nobody here tonight.
I know, I'm.
So far.
They can trickle in Bill.
Oh, what up? We just got here to this full house here.
It's Christmas.
Oh.
Shopping. The schools all have concerts tonight.
All right.
Church plays and it's kind of busy out there for that.
Thought maybe I just had bad breath or something.
You can be accused of all sorts of things up here.
Here's Rick. I'm not the last one. Donna, did you bring the cookies again?
I did not. She can set a public comment. If that would help. Start, you ready?
Always ready.
Not quite, not everybody here.
Good evening. And welcome to our regular meeting of the Villa Park City Council. I hereby call the meeting to order. Jared, would you take the walk?
Uh, yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilman Barnett.
Yes.
Councilman Colacott.
Yes.
Councilman Nelson.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Mills.
Yes.
Mayor Fasenelli.
Present. And if I may ask you at this time, if you have your cell phones, would you please put them on silent or turn them off if you can? We welcome you here to the meeting and if I may ask, um, our new councilman Nelson to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Up to. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. At this time, if I can ask our city attorney to give us an update on the closed session that we have.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Uh, council met in closed session as listed on the agenda and there is no reportable action on this side yet, thank you.
Okay. All right. Moving on, if we could have an update from our fire authority.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Honorable State Council, Mr. Hill Grant, City Staff, and residents in attendance and watching from home. My name is Ron Roberts, I'm one of your Battalion Chiefs assigned to the city of Villa Park. Since our last report, your firefighters have had what we're considering a slightly above-average month. As you can imagine, most of our calls are for medical service. One notable, almost extraordinary event, if you will, I'm sure you're aware of the water situation that we had over on Wildwood Circle. Quite an extraordinary event. Luckily, there were no injuries, there wasn't property damage. But we are thankful that it was nothing worse than that. Homes can always be fixed. Along that line, I'd like to remind the citizens and the residents that Station 23 does have sand and sandbags available. If they should want to protect their homes in some form, they, it's readily available there, it's easy to get to. They're more than welcome to come on by and help themselves and the firefighters if they're there will help you out as well. Like to share with you that we had a great time with the council on Saturday on the Santa tour. And that the firefighters really enjoyed that and the lunch and thank you to the foundation for sponsoring us on that. As well as the boat tour this past Sunday night. I understand that was quite a big success. In conclusion, I just want to say, wish you all a great holiday season and a happy new year. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from council?
No.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And an update from our sheriff's department next.
Thank you, Mayor, Honorable Council. For the month of November, parwind crimes, if you've seen your packet, we've included that Mr. Colacott has requested a legend of about eight reportable car loan crimes. And we're down below double digits.
Uh, hold on, one, where is that?
I, no, I, I received that late for the agenda, so I will include, what would that be? November's report on January's agenda.
That's okay.
Put it at the bottom.
We're here.
Got all the, all the crime numbers.
Okay.
Or what they've described. Um, we have four residential burglars. On one of them, Santiago Boulevard, there were some tools taken from a residence that was vacant and being remodeled and the door was unlocked. So considered a burglary. We had one on Wellington Circle, someone tried to open the door and took jewelry. One on Center where jewelry was taken from a residence and, but the victim believes it was a worker that was at the house unsupervised for a couple hours. And on Janus Circle, someone went upstairs and tried to open a window to gain entry and also took jewelry and a computer. I want to make sure I highlighted upstairs windows because some people leave upstairs windows open thinking that it's, you know, they're going to vent the house and it's a safe, uh, because no one can get up there. Don't leave any windows open in the house. Uh, one vehicle burglary on Alice Lane where a rear, rear window was smashed and someone took a bag out of the backseat. Didn't show a loss on that one, so I'm not sure what was in the bag. Two grand thefts. Um, one of them was another one of those, I'm not sure if it was a ruse or was, uh, someone entered the home invited to buy a printer from a victim. The victim went into the garage to retrieve something, when they came, the people were gone. Uh, they took the keys to her rental car and took the car off, so. And then another one where it shows as a grand theft. Actually it was a house cleaner and she confessed to taking the money during the investigation, so. That one was a, was a, was a crime and then a solved crime. And then one petty theft where UPS packages taken from a car before it's on the truck. For trends, we are, we have one month to go, but we're currently at the, at the total of sixty-nine par one crimes for the year. Still too much for my taste, but we finished last year with a hundred and two. So we should be near the twenty-ten levels or lower. My goal is lower. So when we all participated in the, in the parade, which is, you know, I felt was very successful. I'm getting numbers, I, the Reserve Bureau wasn't able to give it to me today. It happened to me tomorrow for the number of explorers and the number of reserves we had out because I'm going to send a combination of all those numbers. Any questions for me?
With the new parade route, since we went across each other twice, how did that work out? Or the old parade route that came back?
Right. It worked fine only because I asked patrol deputies to come over and help out. And I don't want explorers doing that because they're, they're high school kids. And, uh, and they, sometimes reserves, you have them in different places, as you know, in the Humvee and things like that, so. Uh, to not, and I wouldn't do bike patrol at that, so I felt it was more safe to do it with our patrol deputies, so I just asked two of them to come over. They closed it down pretty thoroughly. Um, I heard from some of the deputies, there was upset people out there. You know, coming east down on Villa Park Road, there was a big traffic jam when I went through, I was the last car through there. Uh, Westbound wasn't too bad, but, you know, some people were making the U-turn and making way and things, but other than that, no inconvenience for a few minutes.
How long was the close down?
Uh, it was, we didn't close it the entire time, we closed it the first time we went through, so however long that was, a same amount of minutes.
I had to.
Maybe eight minutes, ten minutes.
Oh, eight or ten minute shutdown.
And then the same coming down, so we didn't keep it close. Because as long as it was when I came through, we left it in the back.
Would it be advisable to have signs out earlier? Maybe we should do something like that to preempt that?
Can we talk about that, you know, probably at two thousandth minute? I think the residents know the parade's going on, but it probably wouldn't hurt. And people who have traveled that roadway regularly who aren't residents in the city, yeah, might help them. Go another round.
Yeah, just, just make, give them a notice that they may have some delays for a little bit.
Would it make sense to split that thing briefly and let some cars through and then keep it going? No?
It would affect it on the other, you know, when you get to the intersections and there's a big gap, and sometimes there are big gaps anyway for whatever reason.
No, I meant stop, stop, get them halfway through, hold them for a second and then let some cars through and then let the whole, yeah, then let the whole thing go again.
You mean hold it right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
With a split now?
It worked fine. There's some people inconvenience.
But it's okay to do again next year.
My last question. What, what's the burglary level this year versus last year? Not the overall crimes, burglaries.
Right. You talking about residential or vehicle?
Residential.
Uh, we are, uh, no, as of right now, we're at one over than when we were last year. So, last year we had twenty-two residential burglaries in total, including attempts. So that may not be a residential burglary, it's attempted burglary. And as of year-to-date right now, we're at twenty-three.
And that doesn't include December? Extra November, okay. How about vehicles?
Yeah, that's a lot, some of the other ones.
How about vehicles?
Vehicle burglaries last year totaled fourteen were engaged. So yes, some are up and some are down. But overall, and we, and we are still continuing to do our reserve program out there, we have a reserve program. Mostly in the residential areas, looking for anything suspicious and crime. Haven't really come across anything suspicious. But, yeah, and Mike later was, he's in charge of our reserve program, I'm sure all of you folks know him for Villa Park. He's doing the command and stuff.
And I want to compliment your explorers and the reserves. I think they did a tremendous job with the parade.
Yeah, they did, the explorers and reserves were very, very helpful in that, it was, it was nice to have them there.
Can I write a commendation, I'll send copies to you.
Okay.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so now we're going to move on for a public comment. And this is to speak for any item that is not on the agenda. And that is in the jurisdiction of the city council. You'll ha, wish to speak here, if you would please come to the podium, state your name and your address. And you got about five minutes to speak to us. If you need a little bit longer, great, a little bit shorter would be great too. And we have our, our first taker here.
So I, I don't need five minutes. Dr. Robert Hilton, worked two years in Villa Park, later A12. And now lives in Anaheim, there was a, probably nine-five, East Mountwood Trail. First, I want to congratulate the incoming council and congratulate the elected officials. And I wanted you to relate something that I found delightful back in the day. No matter what happened at the council meeting, the council persons went out and had a drink together and smoothed things over. And I would like to see that instituted to the point that I would, uh, probably about the first round. So, put it to the mayor's approval and the council execs.
Well, that's very generous of you, thank you.
Top shelf for Bob.
We'll get, while we get through the, the meeting and we'll give you an answer at the end.
Jared wants him.
Hello, Terry Almendorf, one zero two nine one, Camden Circle. I'm here actually representing the foundation tonight to give you a report on the boat parade. And we too, first of all, want to thank the, the sheriffs and fire department for their assistance because we could not possibly put this together without their help. And they've just been wonderful to us all, seventeen years of this wonderful parade. Probably an estimate, an estimate of fifteen hundred people were along the, the route. Uh, I'm not great at estimating, but I, I'm, you know, they've been trained to estimate. So he said, he agreed, there's probably about fifteen hundred people spectators lined the streets to watch the seventeenth annual Villa Park Dryland Yacht Parade. We had twenty-six entries, uh, plus the Orange County Harbor Patrol, Orange County Sheriff's and OC Fire, they paraded with us, you know, through the streets of E.P. The Villa Park Marching Spartans and the Boy Scout Troop, a fifty-color guard led the yachts into the town center. Immediately following the parade, we had the holiday celebration where our grand marshals, Rich and Ben Holmer, had the honor of lighting our city Christmas tree. We had eight vendors this year offering crafts, food, candy, information on service organizations, and a photo booth with Jack Skellington dressed as Sandy Claus, which was a big hit with all ages. The artist in the Skellington attire was Wes McKay, son of Karen Holphy. Wes is an amazing artist in the field of the latex masks and costuming. And someday he's going to definitely find a career in that vein. And we are so lucky to have him participate in the parade every year and we thank him for giving our parade a very special touch. Uh, thank you to all the committee members, Carl Arnold, Don and Karen Holphy, Ed Carter, Jill Hulley, and Woody Rickle, who is our representative from Serrano Water District for the parade. Uh, special thanks to Woody for standing in with the Serrano boat this year. I told him about a month ago that we might have a couple extras, could he possibly handle our overflow with the Serrano boat? And he said yes. And unfortunately, the ride for the seat council broke down on its way here. So Serrano handled it and took care of everybody and we're really grateful to them for coming through with that. Uh, thanks to Bob and Kelly Jordan, who were the host and hostess of the gathering, the great gathering here in St. Paul. Uh, thank you to Major Chuck J., United States Marine Corps retired. Uh, he's also the musical director at Villa Park High School. And Chuck is in charge of the entertainment you see every year and he brings the Villa Park community band to entertain us and they did a fabulous job. He also brings the band with him and, as I said earlier, they lead the parade in. Once again, Garrison Williams from Newport Pontoon supplied our ride for our grand marshals and our invited guests. He's very supportive of our city events and he provides the pontoon for our grand marshal and he also provides a pontoon in the spring when we have our picnic event. The amazing team of Mike Knowles and Richard Manning, who had a very long day the day before and an equally long day the day of boat parade. Uh, they provide a lot of hours of work and they organize everything so beautifully and we just appreciate their work on this. Carl Arnold organized the judges again this year, providing some really great people who take their job as judges very seriously. It's not an easy task because as you saw, there are many, many wonderful entries and they deliberate quite seriously over who gets the awards. And the winners this year were best youth entry, the Villa Park High School football team. Most artistic was Jeff Green. Best use of lights, Eric Kouts. Best animation, Sarah Gray. Most whimsical, Steve and Kathy Whitehouse. Best use of theme, Paul Murphy. Most interactive, Villa Park High School girls' basketball. Best holiday spirit, Stuart Atkins. Most original, Russell Price. And best overall, John Lewis. The parade committee, uh, committee will be meeting the first of January for our wrap-up meeting and discussing notes that we've taken and, and see how everything worked out this year. And we welcome any suggestions from, from anyone in the city. So if you'd like to send me some suggestions or comments regarding the parade, you can send that to my, my email, VP Terry, T E R I at hotmail dot com or send it to the city and I'm sure you all will forward them on to me. Uh, we really hope everybody enjoyed the parade, we have a lot of fun bringing it to you and we look forward to bringing you the eighteenth annual Villa Park Dryland Yacht Parade next year. Thank you and very Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah and God bless you all in the new year.
Terry, will, there be pictures on the website soon so we can see the boats?
Uh, the pictures were taken by Mark Schmidt and he will undoubtedly get them to Jill and Jill will be putting them on the foundation website. And the winners will also be listed on the foundation website.
Thank you. Continuing with public comment, is there anyone else who would like to speak? Okay, we are seeing none, we're going to move over to our consent calendar. Is there any item here, these are routine and they're enacted by one motion? Is there any member of city council or staff who would like to be, remove any items on the consent calendar?
I'd like to remove item seven, the comprehensive annual financial report.
I'd like to remove items four and five, the minutes from the two past council meetings.
I'd like to move, move to approve the other remainder. If I can get that out of my mouth.
Second.
We have a first and a second for the rest?
Sorry, I didn't catch your statement.
Okay, second was, uh.
I have the, I have the second, I think it was to move all the items except four, five and seven.
Approve the remainder and that would be?
Yeah.
Mayor Pro Tim Mills. Uh, yes. Mayor Pro Tim Mills. Councilman Barnett.
Yes.
Councilman Colacott.
Yes.
Councilman Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Fasenelli.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Let's start with number, let's see, Councilman Colacott, four and five?
Neither I nor Bill Nelson were members of the council at that time, so I don't believe we can vote on the approval of the minutes.
That's correct.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so do we have, do they abstain, Jared? Okay. So do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make it.
I'll second.
Okay.
Uh, we'll, we'll take them collectively and that is to approve the minutes for October and November.
Yes.
Councilman Barnett?
Yes.
Councilman Mills?
Yes.
Mayor Fasenelli?
Yes.
Motion carries three. Moving on to item number seven, which is pulled by Councilman Nelson.
Yeah, I'll pull this item because I'm a big proponent of having, uh, what's essentially the annual audit is in here as a consent item on the calendar. But I would like to have it reviewed by the Budget and Finance Committee, reviewed by someone before it comes to the council. And I understand this one has not been reviewed by the Budget and Finance Committee. I would just like in the future that you have the auditor come in and review it with the Budget and Finance Committee and then come to the council on the consent calendar. Because this way, no one has reviewed it. And, uh, I don't imagine many of you have taken the time to go through this thick document. Not all of you are numbers guys like me, I loved it, you know, I, I devoured it all evening, all afternoon, but, but I, I would just like to come to the Budget and Finance Committee before and have the auditor in to review it with the Budget and Finance Committee before it comes to the council as consent item.
Michelle, is it normal, tell me in the past, has it gone to the budget and finance or was it just a time issue?
No, it hasn't, it's just a time issue because we bought for the pattern for the award and we ordered for. for the audit firm to get it done timely enough to get to get away by September 31st. It never had, it was a time issue. So the auditors, you know, approved it, I reviewed it, but the board, the Budget and Finance Committee, were a time issue, so it's never done.
We could do that in the future, though, just, we don't have, they don't have to have a meeting, you can actually just give it to them prior so they could review it and ask questions and bring it to the council, right? It wouldn't be an issue to do that? I think that's a good suggestion.
I'd like for, I'd like for it to be a formal review with the auditor and the Budget and Finance Committee, because it's an important document.
You want the auditors there, too? Is that what you said?
Yes. Yeah, with the auditors. Because actually, the auditors, the auditors supposedly sometime talk to the people in governance, and this way they've never talked to the people in governance.
No, they do. They send out a letter, they have, they're required to send a letter at the beginning of our audit to each individual council member to request any areas of concern, any areas that, I mean, that they won't look into or whatnot. And throughout the audit, if anything arises, a letter is given to them. Therefore, I mean, they are in the loop of...
Okay, but it was, this audit was dated December the fifth and the sixteenth. The Budget and Finance Committee could have reviewed it before this meeting.
I don't recall ever having received one of those letters.
It's in your box every year.
Why don't we refer this back to the Budget and Finance Committee and see if they can come up with a protocol of how it could be done in the timely manner?
Yeah, okay.
Another question, Michelle, can it be done prior to December fifth? Is there, kidding, the process be moved up a little bit?
Well, that's...
Because you...
It depends on the audit firm you have, because they have a time limit. They come do, you know, two, three, two weeks on-site after year-end. So they usually start in August or end of August or early September.
Mm-hmm.
They come do their work, and why don't they have three or four other clients? So they've taken all the information, then they have to compile a report, then it goes through their report review process, it goes through their quality control, then they send a draft to me, which then I go through all of my detail. I mean, I can give a draft to, but I mean, I think at that point, the Budget and Finance Committee have all of the information. So giving them a draft when I haven't reviewed it, I don't know if that would necessarily be the wisest. I mean, it could just be a longer process. But at that point, I send it back, we go about three different versions. When it comes back to me, then we verify, we have to do, it's a final letter with the attorney to make sure nothing has occurred from the end of the audit date to the date they actually issue the report, see if there's, you know, anything that the attorneys have any legal risks that have come up. And then the letter is dated and copies are made and...
Okay, well, maybe you should get together with the Budget Finance Committee and just work out this little schedule so it can be reviewed, and maybe during your final, your final review or something.
Yeah, but it has been on, I've seen it's been on the council agenda as early as November in the past.
Yeah, it depends on the timing of the audit form that you're using.
But then we just have to tell the auditors when we want the audit done, then. That's all you have to do. Just tell them, tell them when you want to have it done.
Yeah, okay.
So we will move this on to the Budget Committee. They'll come back with us with a timeline on it.
Okay.
Then do I have a motion to...
I'll move approval.
Second.
This year. This year.
Yeah.
Motion to receive and file. Councilman Nelson?
Yes.
Councilman Barnett?
Yes.
Councilman Colacut?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Mills?
Yes.
Mayor Fasenelli?
Yes.
All right, so we are now on to new business. And our first new business is Resolution 2014-3303, Resolution for the City of Villa Park to declare its intent to conduct a public hearing regarding conditions present at 10291 Camden Circle, to determine whether conditions constitute a public nuisance. Jared, I'll turn it over to you for reporting.
Yes. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have prepared a PowerPoint presentation for you tonight. Please stop me at any time, ask any questions if you may have. Again, the subject property is 10291 Camden Circle. Tonight, the action is to declare its intent to hold the public hearing. We're not taking an action, we're not determining whether or not it's a public nuisance tonight, just to say that we want to hold that hearing in January. A little bit of history about the property. When I opened the case file, there's history dating back to 2007. Staff has sent letters in 2007, eight, nine, ten, eleven, and fourteen. In July of 2010, the city council confirmed...
My microphone, excuse me. The city council confirmed fines of about $2,500 on the property. And then about a month later, the Villa Park Rotary got together and had a workday audit at the property and actually cleaned it up. From what I can determine, the fines were waived, but I have not been able to verify that just yet. But I believe council waived the fines because Rotary went in there and cleaned the property up. It fell back on our radar again in September this year. It's always been on the radar, but we never really had a lot of community pressure until September. That time, we contacted the property owner to resolve the violations. We allowed them, as we do with every property, time to bring it into compliance. After about ninety days, there really wasn't noticeable improvement. Went out there, and the letter I sent, I believe I copied council on, established a deadline, the original deadline, December fifteenth. Friday was the twelfth, and we went out there on Friday, and just the lawn had been mowed. If we would have given it until the fifteenth, I missed this meeting. So then it extends it another forty-five days. So I decided to put it on the agenda right now. And the reason for that is we are receiving weekly complaints, where several residents are starting to call in now. So the timeline, if you adopt the resolution tonight, it just sets your intent to hold the public hearing on January 27th. Between now and then, I will notify the property owner. Assuming you adopt it and declare it a public nuisance in January, it starts the thirty-day clock, so the deadline for compliance would be February of 2015. The violations include landscaping, that it be maintained in a healthy and growing condition, receive regular mowing and trimming, and shall be kept free of all waste and material. The trash bins were visible from the public streets. Travis just drove by the property, and the trash bins have been corrected. Window screens and material, I'm told there's a U-Haul box, and there's a picture in here covering one of the windows, which is seen from the public right-of-way, and our city's code says that they must be covered by glass, shutters, awnings, drapes are acceptable. The last nuisances are just its overall condition, which is unsightly. Number of the property owners, the neighboring property owners, I understand are having difficulty selling their homes, which have been on the market for quite some time. There is alleged loss of property values because of this house. So it all adds up, and it's been on the radar since, you know, at least 2007, from what I can tell, same issues. Photographs, you really cannot tell here. This was taken on Friday, the twelfth. The yard and the trees are overgrown, some hedges and bushes closer to the house are somewhat overgrown as well. You can see up against the garage, probably not in this picture, there's just general debris and maintenance items piling up. It's housekeeping, it's just tidying up a bit. This picture was taken on November the sixth. Again, you can see the dead yard, the overgrown trees. Here's a picture taken on the sixth as well, with the trash cans visible from the street. The truck is operable, so there's nothing we can do about that, but the general debris scattered throughout the yard we can. Again, just pictures taken from '06, and you can see that the tree in the picture is pretty, pretty overgrown, limbs down to the ground almost. And then I included some pictures from, here's March of 11. Pots, soil bags scattered, garden hoses scattered, some overgrown vegetation. Here is March 2011 again, and here's the picture, that was in 2008. Again, the city was going after the property in 2008. I'd much rather have it look like this back in '08 than it does today. That concludes the presentation. The motion tonight, city's recommendation, staff's recommendation is declare its intent to conduct a public hearing at the January 27, 2015 meeting. We're available for any questions.
Regarding water these days, is a yard that's just neat, but maybe not watered okay?
Absolutely.
Okay.
All right, at this time, I'd like to open up public comment. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this property? Seeing none, we'll close public comment. Staff has spent quite a bit of time on this property, and I think they're looking for a little assistance. I know that a lot of people have been calling in, complaining for a variety of reasons. There have been some emails that have come through, some of them anonymous, some of them with names on them, because people don't want to be unneighborly. But they would like their neighborhood to look, to look good, and I believe that we should support that at this time. Any other comments?
And again, between now and January, if the property is cleaned and maintained, our recommendation will be...
Good.
I'll ask the enforcement...
Radar.
So do I have a motion?
I'll move to approve the resolution.
I'll second it.
I will read it into the record. Let me flip back to the page. Motion to approve Resolution 2014-3303, Resolution of the City Council of Cityville Park declaring its intent to conduct the public hearing regarding conditions present at 10291 Camden Circle Villa Park, California, to determine whether such conditions constitute a public nuisance. Councilman Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Mills?
Yes.
Councilman Colacut?
Yes.
Councilman Barnett?
Yes.
Mayor Fasenelli?
Yes.
Motion carries.
We are moving on to Item Number Ten. This is for Villa Park to participate in a senior mobility program. This was something that I can talk about a little bit, that I asked Jared about when I first got on council, and it kind of came up, you know, last year, when I ran into some residents that I realized couldn't drive from their home to come out to a meeting that we had here. And in asking that, I said, what options do we have here to get them out? And if they're disabled, they have certainly access, the access bus or in such, but I just wanted to know how we can get residents out of their home to go out, have a cup of coffee, have some dinner. And in turn, Jared did look at many options, and he found many options, actually, not that all of them were good for us. So working with OCTA, he has found the following, and we do have a representative here who's going to explain the program to us.
Yes, tonight we have Dave Cinson, as you all know, OCTA Government Relations Manager, I believe, as well as Dana Y. Miller, Community Transportation Manager. And before we call them up to answer any questions you have about the senior mobility program, I'll just run through a couple of the items for you.
OCTA gives us a lot of flexibility with this program. Pick it up, please. Gives us a lot of flexibility with this program to tailor it to Villa Park needs. It was established in '01, and it's funded by Measure M2 funds. Minimum age, as defined by OCTA, is sixty. For Villa Park, it's based off the sales tax, the actual sales tax. And this year, this fiscal year, 1415, eligible for about $10,000. The agreement calls for a start date of January 1, '15, so eligible for half, for about $5,000. Next year, say it's a two-year agreement, we shall see about $10,700, and it carries over. So assuming we don't use all $5,000, well, you know, maybe $3,000 of it, we'll have $12,000 starting next year. Again, the funding, Measure M2, is based on actual sales tax received. For our program, to be eligible, you must be a Villa Park resident, sixty-plus years of age, and then, that's all we've established so far. Down the line, we can, if the program takes off, implement income requirements, few other criteria along the way. Our scope of work is going to be a curb-to-curb taxi service. There's no cost to participants, they'll fill out an application with the city, staff, city staff will verify that they're, one, Villa Park resident, two, over the age of sixty, and then we prepare a, essentially, an Excel spreadsheet of participants, and I'll send that over to California Yellow Cab. At that time, once they're eligible, as determined by us, we'll present them with, you know, a coupon card, which gives them a toll-free number to call and schedule directly with the taxi company, their service. There's two ways. Staff can administer it, but you're really limited to calling during business hours. Staff doesn't administer it, we give the 100 number, they can call 24/7, 365, which is great, which is what we want, because it really increases their transportation needs.
We have capped it, I suggest capping it to 20 miles per trip. The 20-mile distance will get you down to the spectrum, if you want. It'll get you to the Brea Mall, it'll get you to the Block. We're hoping they come down to the town center, we love the sales tax, but there really isn't much here. So in case they want to get out, go to social hour, visit grandkids, anything, they're pretty much free to go wherever you want on the 20 miles. Now, again, that's 20 miles one way is one trip, 20 miles back is another. So one, essentially, social outing is two trips. The cost to the city is, with California Yellow Cab, zero to five miles is a city cost of $15. Now, on the right-hand side, you'll see there's a co-pay. We can establish a co-pay if the city chooses. It could be a dollar, it could be $3, it could be $10 out of that $15 cost. But right now, until we see how active this program is, I'm ready to subsidize all of it. That's what we want. We want to encourage it, and we want to start their travel. Six to nine miles is 25, 10 to 14 is 35, 15 to 20-mile cap is a $50 charge. Anything over that will come out of the passenger's pocket. And what happens is that toll-free number that they receive is assigned to Villa Park. So they'll call that, it will show up on California Yellow Cab system, they'll note right away it's from Villa Park, they GPS track their mile and their mileage. So at the end of the month, California Yellow Cab invoices the city, the city processes that invoice, pays California Yellow Cab, and we submit a monthly report to OCTA, and then OCTA reimburses the city every two months. Everything's tracked, reported, and accounted for. Trip assumptions, this is pretty difficult, I don't know how it's going to take off. Assuming, you know, we have 100 trips in the zero to five category, and 20 in 15 to 20 miles, we could get over, you know, 200 to 400 trips a year, depending on what you look at. And this is no limitation. If we run out of money, the city, you know, will have to decide whether or not we want to continue funding the program, or I'd imagine just ending it until the next year. But again, until we really know how travel's going to occur, it's pretty difficult to assume where they're going to go. That is it with my report. I'm available for any questions, as well as representatives from OCTA, in case I miss anything.
If I can just elaborate on what you just gave to give a little bit more detail. When we, the purpose that we have here is to allow people the mobility to get out of their home, enjoy their life. We have a lot of people here, even that are over 65, they still drive, they don't drive at night, but maybe they'd like to go to dinner at night and they can't anymore. So this gives them the ability to do something. As far as, if we use all the money in the program, it would end unless we find money that somebody wants to donate to the city to do that. At this point, I don't believe we're suggesting that the city subsidize it past the money that's received from OCTA. If the foundation or another organization wants to do that in the future, that's certainly something that we can look at doing. But at this time, you know, I don't believe the city should be, you know, funding something like that. But it's available. I believe there's 30 cities that participate in this, and we were provided with a budget. I mean, there's a lot of money, there's a lot of cities that participate in this, and we've just never have done it. I know that I've received wonderful comments from our residents, who, what they've said is we can go out at night, because they're not able to do that. If there's a little discussion here, if anyone would like to discuss it here, or I can open up public comment to hear from the comments, from the questions. Yes, of course.
How, this program exists already in other cities, correct? What kind of usage are we seeing in the other cities?
It's pretty difficult. Each city has a program tailored for themselves. OCTA will actually provide a 17-passenger van, so some cities has, have opted to go with the van, pay for the fuel, the maintenance, the surcharge, as well as the driver, and then shuttle them around, you know, Monday through Friday, 8 to 5. Usage is great.
Of those cities that are using the same kind of the SMP taxi service, what kind of usage are we seeing?
Nobody has, really told me any numbers. They're just, it's a well-used program.
Okay. And how do other cities, and how do we propose to communicate this to our senior community?
Oh, we'll put it out in the E-Network, in the Hidden Jewel Magazine, in the Register, it'll be on the website. We'll disseminate it as much as possible.
The little blurb in the century was enough to get, they read it. It was, they found it, and it was little.
OCTA might be able to answer the usage question a little better than I do. They'll see the monthly reports.
Jared, does, would this fall, review of this fall within any of our committees? Not really, is outside. Then I, I would like to make a suggestion. You can see there's a lot of flexibility. I mean, I've got a pretty good feel for what's going on. It sounds like we could restrict dollar limits per person or per family. We could put disability issue, we could do whatever's reasonable to assist the community. I would suggest that some group of the board or staff put together just a little term sheet for how we might structure availability, limits, et cetera, just, just a little used term sheet, and that we revisit this the next meeting. Because, I mean, to me, it sounds like a great idea, but it would be nice to see, how are we going to offer this? Is it going to be so much cap, so that one guy doesn't burn the entire $10,000 fund up? They have to be disabled people, they have not have a car, they have to have drivers. We're going to have some reasonable parameters come back so we could take a look at it, because the program, kind of a no-brainer, it looks like to me.
And I would defer that to the City Council. This was Mayor Fasenelli's item, and she and I kind of worked with this, and this is what we developed. Now I'm bringing it to you for your recommendations. Tell me what you want to see, and I can go back and tweak it. Absolutely.
What we tried to do, Rick, because we don't know how it's going to take off in our city, and we don't want the staff to administer. The City of Brea, if I'm correct, but they administer this themselves, Jared? Like the City of Brea does?
I'd have to look at Brea specifically.
Because, I mean, because they have such large participants. Here, we don't want the staff time. So we simplified it, and we said, you know, we can limit it to 10 miles. We can limit, you know, it's, I figure since the funds are there to use, we don't know how they're going to use it. Could there be abuse? Of course. I mean, there could be.
One trip to Newport Beach back's 100 bucks, and we only got 10,000, so you got 100 people, 100 trips, and it's over. So I guess I'm just trying to kind of move through the item. What if, what if we did exploit it? What if we just implemented the program? Authorized it for anybody 60 and over that resides in the city? Put it, it's a six-month plan, essentially, right? It's for, it's to June, okay?
Can raise the age, too.
For this first category. So what if we just did it in, yeah, we could raise the age.
See how it goes.
Yeah, we could raise the age.
And we just put a dollar limit per individual, so nobody breaks the bank. And then we can look at the reports and monitor at the end of six months, see what happened, and then we could refine the program. Does that make sense?
Well, at this point, it really won't be an official program. It'll be like a pilot, correct?
Absolutely.
So, the rules can kind of be a little malleable, I think, at this point.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, and to see how it works, until the first 5,000 is gone through.
Yeah, we just set some rough guidelines. Here it is. We'll implement it on that basis, and then we'll review it at the end of this fiscal year, and see if we can refine it and move on. That would be my suggestion, and we just set a limit. I'll throw something out. $250 an individual for the next six months, 60 years of age or older, 20 miles.
Let me ask a que, that's the information we want. We won't have the information by person. So when they call, you're going to call in and say, hey, you know, I'm Rick Barnett, and I'd like to go to Newport Beach. When we get the bill, we're not going to get a bill that says Rick Barnett went to Newport Beach.
Don't they have an account? Don't we get a number or something?
It's going to be...
I would have to see, but we'd have to create some sort of monitoring program for that. Absolutely. When I spoke with California Yellow Cab, again, OCTA gives us all the flexibility to design the program. When I spoke with California Yellow Cab, I thought about that. Can we limit it to, you know, four trips per person per month? They do not administer that, and they do not really essentially care how many trips anybody's taking. So it would fall to staff. So the Villa Park residents would have to call into the city, schedule it, and then we call California Yellow Cab on their behalf. We're the middlemen for that, and that just creates a little more work.
Yeah, what would, doesn't Yellow Cab keep, is there an approval number by citizen that comes down and gets approval? Is it their names, or is there, is something that we could index to, so at least we could see the report and say, hey?
They would have to have an address where they picked them up at, so you could probably track it by address.
It would be, and then, but then we're 30 days behind.
That's if they provide us with the law, yeah, that's, yeah.
Well, I understand that, and maybe somebody could abuse it, but maybe as a condition of approval for the program, we say, here are the criteria. If you exceed this, you know, you're responsible, and if we get a bill for 2,500 bucks for the next three months of your cab fares, you know, 2,200 of that, or 2,000.
I think we can set a limit, and when it gets to a certain number, we can shut it off.
We could do that, and then, I mean, if they go over, the city can invoice them, maybe, perhaps, for their costs.
You've got to have something, otherwise somebody would...
Yeah, let's not look past the goodness of the program, because we can find the abuse there. The abuse is there. Let's go with the goodness of it first, and see how, you know, people can look.
So can we just cut it off at some point when the money's done? We could just say, hey, we're out of money, and we just, and that's it? And then they can't call in?
Yeah, well, I...
That's correct.
I assume we would cut it off.
That is correct.
Okay, so that's one way to put it.
That is correct. When the funding is, when the funding is finished, it's over.
Can we move this along?
Mr. Councilman Colacott has a question.
Are any other cities instituting a co-pay? And if so, for the SMP taxi service? And if so, what kind of co-pays? Can you provide some information on that?
Yes, $2, $5, $10 co-pays.
No, I mean, what other cities are the, what other cities are instituting co-pays? And how much are those co-pays?
That's what he said.
How much?
Why don't you come on up to the podium, so we can hear you. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Fasenelli, Councilmembers. I'm Dana Y. Miller, manager of Community Transportation Services at OCTA, and our department has been administering this program for a number of years. And to address some of the questions that you have, I guess, the, you know, first question at hand is, is our cities charging a co-pay? Yes, I don't have the specifics as to specifically what they're requiring. They usually, most cities try to keep it rather modest, maybe a dollar, a couple of dollars, recognizing that they want to keep it certainly lower than what an access fare would be. All the information for the city programs, kind of a brief synopsis of their program, the phone number to call, any information about passenger fares is all available on the OCTA website. If you look up the Senior Mobility Program, you can see what each of the cities are doing. There are a number of cities who are operating taxi programs. Off the top of my head, Cypress, Rancho Santa Margarita, Laguna Woods, Laguna Hills, Mission Viejo. Some of those cities have more robust budgets for their programs. Rancho, Rancho Santa Margarita is one city that has a very modest budget. And actually, a taxi program like this is really the best way to go when you do have a smaller budget and a smaller community, and they've really made it work. And we are happy to work with Jared and any other city, you know, council staff members to help in any, you know, program design questions that you may have. Again, just kind of utilizing the experience we've had working with other cities and developing their programs.
Is anybody using Uber or something like that? Or is there a contract with the patient of Yellow Cab?
No, actually, all of the cities that are currently operating taxi programs are using California Yellow Cab. So I would say that they're a company that you can feel very comfortable with in terms of your senior transportation. They had been a longtime subcontractor to OCTA for our access service. They had, for a number of years, also provided senior transportation service for nutrition programs for a number of cities under contract to OCTA. So they have a vast amount of experience in senior and special needs transportation, so you should feel very comfortable with them. And then there are a number of cities who operate their service, either with, like a van or shuttle type of service. Some of them operate on their own. They hire their own drivers and they operate the program. Others contract it out, and it's kind of a turnkey, and they, there's various contractors that can operate the service for them. So it's really, we try not to make any dictates, so to speak, on the program. It's really, here's the funding that's available. We encourage cities to kind of canvas the community, find out what they think would work best in their community, and what the seniors are looking for, and tailor a program that meets their community, you know, really meets their community's needs and works within the funding that's available.
So then the city could contract however it wants with whatever source of transportation. You just reimburse them, it's the city policy.
Right, exactly. And the way that it works now, essentially, with the M2 funding, they're, they're bimonthly payments, or, let's see, March, yeah. Essentially, there's two months of sales tax revenue that will come to the city. And the city receives the funding, and again, how you, the funding can carry over year to year. There's a three-year term, essentially, for any M2 funding that the funds need to be expended within those three years. But I doubt that you would have any problem with that.
When you started other programs in other cities, how long did it take, how many iterations, before they kind of settled into a rhythm with it?
You know, I'm trying to think of one that's been more recent. Well, Rancho Santa Margarita's been around for a while. I wouldn't say they're more recent, but I think that they're very similar in terms of the, probably the numbers of people and the budget amounts. And so I think they learned some things along the way. You know, a lot of times, you may start with a program, and you realize that, you know, perhaps the utilization is much higher than anticipated, and to your point of, you know, could someone just essentially use all of the funding, and then it's gone. So I think what you would probably want to do is to see if there's a way to kind of monitor, again, the usage, who's using the program. I think you can certainly work with Yellow Cab. Again, as a contractor for all of these other cities, I think you can really work with them to craft the kind of monitoring that you want of the program, what kind of data that you should receive on a monthly basis with their invoice, so that you can see how the utilization is going. And then you may need to just, you know, if you're finding that you're exceeding what your, you know, budget dollars are, look at ways that you may want to either authorize, you know, do trip prioritization, look at the age, look at the types of trips that are being taken, if you want to put some restrictions there. Cities do it different ways, really, again, depending on the needs of the community. And, you know, there are other services available for things like non-emergency medical transportation. Access is available if they're, if they meet ADA criteria. Access is available for any trip purpose with no prioritization. So I think, you know, to try and understand what the gaps and needs are is really the best way to utilize the funds. And we're happy to assist in any of them.
You mentioned ADA now with no prior, what does that mean? I'm not sure. Because that's a different program altogether, correct?
Right, right. And this is not an ADA program, so you are under no obligation to follow ADA regulations in this program. I'm talking about in terms of access service. Obviously, that is an ADA program, and so individuals to use that service need to meet ADA guidelines. There's an eligibility process for that service.
Using Santa Margarita as an example, what kind of distance limits do they have? And what kind of a co-pay do they have?
You know, unfortunately, I don't have that information at my fingertips. We can certainly look that up and provide that.
If I may jump in here. Let me run down the list. I pulled up some notes. City of Lysio, Viejo, doesn't give a distance limitation, no cost. Anaheim, no charges to their senior centers. Brea, curb-to-curb transportation, no cost. Buena Park, cost for medical appointments is a dollar per person each way. Costa Mesa, no cost. Cypress, cost is free. Dana Point, no cost. Fountain Valley, $2 per ride. Let me jump down to Rancho.
We're good. I think that, I think the point's been proven that they're offering a service to get people out of the house. There are other services that we're going to look at in the future, other than access I am familiar with. But there are other services for medical reasons. So they don't have to use this service for medical reason. We're going to look into that, as to how we can assist people also. This is more for a lifestyle assistance.
Rancho's program is pretty unique in that they have pre-designated locations. If a participant wants to go to Januance Airport, it's $30. If they want to go anywhere local, which would be within RSM city limits, it's $2.50 each way. If they want to go to Laguna Nogal, they have it set up with their neighboring cities. Laguna Nogal is 875. Mission Viejo Lake Forest is 625. Laguna Hills is 750 each way. So again, I mean, there's no rhyme or reason between any of these programs. It's all up to us.
Is that the co-pay, or is that the total fee from the cab?
That would be the co-pay amount.
Co-pay.
I think we need to give it a whirl, basically.
Can I open up public, may I open up public comment? If there's anyone here who'd like to speak on this issue? Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And Dave, thank you for driving us around.
Wayne Selsell, 18202, Montana Circle, and here at Villa Park. The breakpoint between $15 and $25, I would think we'll find it as somewhere between 6 and 1215. That gets you down to, from here to, it'll be over 5, let's say, to Chapman College to go to the library.
$20 from the circle to my house.
So I think the breakpoint's pretty wide, from 15 to 25. If I were a cab driver, I'd take the long way to get that extra 10 bucks. So you might look at that, and also guess, if I had the Villa Park Knitting Club and wanted to go down to have lunch at the, wherever, can I have, fill the cab up with all my guests for the party? Maybe we get two cabs if there's, so there's that, too. These are some of the things that probably need to be sorted out.
We have that, we have that answer. It's four people. Four people can get in the cab.
I don't think there's any, I think it's a great idea. There are many people that just plain can't get out, and they can't drive at night. That's probably the biggest one. So I think it's a good idea. I just think we need to fine-tune it. But I think, you know, you've got to do a trial balloon to see where you made your mistakes.
Any others? Public comment is, public comment is closed, and we'll bring it back to council.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea, and I'd like to go with it the way staff has proposed it. I'd rather not put restrictions on it now, because the idea is to get people out of their homes. And if we run out of money, you know, we run out of money. We stop it, and then we can put in more restrictions if we need it. But we don't know if people are going to use it at all now. So why not just give it a whirl the way they have it set up now?
I have a sug, I, that's, I mean, I think that's great, Bill. I just have one suggestion. I think, since we can structure it any way we want with a cab company, and receiving the revenue, you know they're going to accommodate you. Presume they will. I think that anybody who wants to participate, check in here. We have to identify, qualify them, if you will. Not a big deal.
That's already in here.
I understand it is, I understand it is. But I think we should issue them a number, okay? I think we should have a file, and we should have a list, and we issue a number. And they can present that number when they call in the cab company. I think the cab company sent us a bill. They should track it by number, and we'll get a report. And when we look at the stuff, we can see who's going where and how much money is being used. And we can take, we can go from there. Just so we can identify and track, we assign a number. They got to qualify, we got to identify them somehow. Just write down the list, 1, 2, 3, or whatever. With that, I'd make the motion.
I disagree. I think we should just do it just what Steph said, and we'll see how it works out. I think we're, now we're getting into too much administrative work with it.
You can't track. You, you have to qualify the people. If you qualify them, you have to know who they are. There has to be a list, and there has to be a number.
That information's already in play. When they sign up with the, the Yellow Cab.
You sign up.
For once, they, they took most of the private information off, names and phone numbers. Yellow Cab sent me a sample report. Uh, it has, I mean, even standing appointments. Some of these folks will have a standing appointment to take them down to their bunc-o club or their neighbor's house. So they pick them up every Wednesday at 4:30 and drop them off, you know, every, so that information will be tracked. We'll know who's using it, where they're going, how many times they're using it. We'll have all that info.
How does Yellow Cab know it's a qualified individual?
We give them the report. We pre-qualify them. I verify that they're a Villa Park resident and over 60.
So the reports you get, you can crunch it down any way you want. That's all I was asking, whether you do numbers, names, as long as you can take the report, put it in the computer, and, and get the printout by category or whatever you want to do. That's all I'm saying. That's all you're there. So with that, I'm...
My second.
Do I hear a motion? Did we have a, oh, Bill?
I'll, I'll move the, I'll move the staff recommendation for the program as they outlined it.
Okay. I thought Rick did it. Okay.
I'll second it.
There you go.
Councilman Nelson?
Yes.
Councilman Barnett?
Yes.
Councilman Colacott?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Mills?
Yes.
Mayor Fasenelli?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I hope to see some people going out to dinner at night who don't normally go out to dinner at night with this program, so that would be very good.
You could take your own bridge, force them, can't you?
Yeah, you could. All right, where are you? That would be great. That would be good.
That would be good.
Thank you, OCTA people. I see they're picking up and leaving, so I thought I'd...
Thank you, Dave.
We are on to agenda item number 11, implementation of speaker cards. And Jared, you want to lead us into this discussion?
Uh, this would be the implementation of speaker cards. Recently, a couple of the council members have inquired about a speaker card system or public comments and agenda items. Some cities have them, again, some cities don't. It's up to the city council, the policymaker. A sample speaker card is in the back of the report for you, in which it asks for a name, address, the city, a telephone number, and then, you know, the meeting date, whether or not you want to speak on an item that's on the agenda or not on the agenda. Uh, this will help us keep track of who's here to speak at the meetings. This will also help spell the name and address right for, for the minutes. Well, the dress will get, the names will get. Again, these cards, it's important to note, it's voluntary. It's not mandatory. Uh, anybody under the, you know, First Amendment can walk in the door. They don't even have to announce who they are and talk on any subject matter that falls within your jurisdiction. Um, some, again, some cities have them, some cities do not. The difficult thing for us here in Villa Park will be how to implement it. When do we collect the cards? When do I walk up there and, and, you know, pass them to the mayor? Does the mayor announce the names? Does staff announce the names? Want to disrupt the meeting as, as much as possible. A couple other concerns that I heard are that it may discourage some folks from talking because they don't want to write their name, walk up, walk it over to me. Overall, some things to, to keep in the back of your mind while you're considering this. I think it's a good idea. It will really help us out. It will formalize the meetings here. Um, I can, you know, gather, or staff can gather the cards. We'll put them in the proper order. You know, if it's a public comment, I'll put those in one stack. If it's an agenda item, I'll put them in another. Uh, likely, I could just simply pass them to Councilman Nelson. He could shoot them down the line to Mayor Fasenelli, and she can announce the recommendations at the, or the speakers at the time. Um, but again, it's, it's a decision that needs to be made by the city council, and I'm here to implement them. You say so.
I have a comment here. Where this came up, not just from going to other council meetings and looking at it, was that I did go to a few board meetings where I found our residents were also there too. And those same residents filled out a card at these meetings, had no problem with it, and went up to the podium. And it was just more of a streamlined process. The, uh, the mayor knew the person's name, addressed them by their name. Um, there was no misunderstanding. And there were people even at the end who came up with cards to the city clerk. And that's where this came from, in addition to, we have had some heated discussions in our council in the last several years, and we do have some heckling and some questions being given to us from the galley. And it just might put a little formality into it, just have someone come up and speak.
Do we need to have a public comment on this first?
We do, but we're having just a little, I think, just, we can discuss here first. Yeah, we can have a council discussion.
We can do that first?
Uh-huh, yes.
Okay.
Well, I, I think it'd make the meetings a little more orderly, too. You know, if you have a, during the public session, if you have a group of people that want to speak on a specific item, you can have to speak, ask them to come to the podium first.
We have this in fire. OCFA has it, and it's very simple. They have, they get a little table where they have them on. Everybody knows when they come in here, there's a little table. You can fill the stuff out. It, it is much more organized, and to me, I think it makes a lot of sense, and I'm frankly ready to make a motion unless somebody else...
Uh, Rick, I think at OCFA, they also, you can, if you're late, you can fill the card out and you give it to the clerk or the...
Yeah, it's, it's out of time. It's very flexible. They've got the cards out there. Everybody knows about it. You come in, you pencil it out, and you hand it to, to staff nearest, the nearest you, and, and it gets funneled on up, and it, and it, and it works well. I, I don't really see a problem with it, and we're not hard-nosed. If somebody wants to make a stick about it, I'm sure they can come up without the card, but I doubt this would be a problem.
I'd like to move it along.
In fact, I'd make the motion.
I need that public comment first.
Yeah.
Uh, open up public comment?
I'll make comment after the public.
All right. Public comment's closed?
Uh, I really think, I really think it's a great idea. I think it's a way to make the meeting more efficient. I don't see how anyone could complain because you're not required to do it. Like, now we ask people to come up and give their name and their address, and they do it, but they're not really required to do that either. Uh, this is one of the items I think we can add that will make the meeting more efficient. You know, more efficient for the mayor to know who's speaking. I had some other items I thought would be, help it to be more efficient, too. You know, some time limits. We start putting a time up here. We have a, a five-minute time limit on speakers. I think that's something we should enforce. I think we should also have a time limit on, on topics, and also on council members, you know, uh. And I think we should enforce those, uh, time limits. And Jared had told me he had, um, he had brought to the council before a clock and a voting machine, you know, that would also help us to be more efficient. I think we should implement all of these things to make us be more efficient.
Uh, I would like to expand on the voting issue. I feel that we should look into having staff, have staff look into the, I call it the push-button voting. I'm not sure exactly what it is, which it's electronic, and we all, when he, we all take the vote, we take it at the same time so that one council person is not influenced or looks like they're influenced by another.
Right.
And I think that, you know, it would be nice to be able to direct staff. I don't know if we should be talking about that now.
Can we, can, can we bring it for a future agenda item?
That would be for the future. Yeah, direct staff can bring us back that.
That can return in January with a few items to help streamline and...
Yeah.
Maybe we should do these one at a time, though, I think, probably.
Well, the speaker cards is, we have that on the agenda here, so we can act on that tonight.
We can act, we can act on that, but, uh, I'd like to, for us to bring back the one about the voting machine and, and time limits on, um, topics and council members. And any of these could be, uh, you know, could be waived by the mayor. So could we have those on our next agenda to become, become even more efficient?
I, I, I would appreciate that.
All right, but, uh, if there's no other comments, I would, I would move approval of the speaker cards, because I think it's a great idea. Now, if he had his, if he had his voting machine, he'd just, we'd all just hit.
We'd just push our button?
It's going to be so nice. I won't fumble through titles.
I won't fumble through all these titles.
Motion to implement the, uh, speaker cards. Councilman Nelson?
Yes.
Councilman Barnett?
Yes.
Councilman Colacott?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Mills?
Yes.
Mayor Fasenelli?
Yes.
Motion carries, and I will return in January with a few recommendations.
Uh, agenda item, let's see, number 12. This is the Considerate 2, 2015 Council Committee Appointments. And I'm going to assume that everyone up here did get a copy of the appointments. That was not in the agenda book. Jared, would you like me to read, would you like me to read these? Would you read them out loud? How do we let the public know this, since it was not in the agenda book?
I'm on another item.
I have copies in the public agenda packet in the back. You're welcome to announce your appointments.
Okay. Um, well, first, is there any discussion?
Yeah, I had a...
The appointments are?
I had a question on the committees. You've made some changes on committees. You know, consolidated some, eliminated some, added some new ones.
The, okay, what we used to have is a town center committee, and that has been a standing committee. It was supposed to be an ad hoc committee when there were some issues that were, that were needed in the town center, and that was, I think, when the building was being reconstructed. Last year, we didn't meet at all. The year before, we called two meetings. One meeting, no one came. The next meeting, we had two people. Um, Greg and I were on that town committee. So there isn't a need for a committee for that. If one of the building owners does have an issue, which they do all the time, they do call the city manager.
Okay.
Okay, so that town center committee, we eliminated. No reason to have a committee if we don't need it.
It's an ad hoc, so you can add it anytime.
We can add it, yeah, if something comes up. The Human Resources Committee, and I believe Brad and Rick were on that for the last two years. That's part of budget and finance. They don't per se have a human resource meeting. The only meeting that we have when it comes to personnel would be with the entire council and the city manager. So there's been no need for a human resource committee. If anything comes up in that area, it would be handled under budget and finance. That's just been consolidated. But in the last two years, there's been none. Uh, then, other than that, we suggest, or what we did is we took the Investment Advisory Committee out of budget and finance, because budget and finance is separate and does other things other than investment and advisory. You have, I don't know how many people are in investment and advisory. How many people are on there?
Quite a few. There, there are five, five members, two, uh, all of them members and two council members.
And two council members, okay. Where budget and finance, you don't have any outside-appointed, outside-appointed people when it comes to that. So they're different. So that's been separated into two different groups.
No, my question was, these committees were set up by the council. Don't they have to be changed by the council?
I worked with Jared together with his direction, so if there's been something that's done incorrectly, I don't know.
And that's what we're doing with this action.
No, that, that's not the action you have here. The action is committee appointments, not, not changing committees.
Encompassing. The, the...
No, no, it's not encompassing. It's not encompassing. Does, agenda item is city council committee appointment. Says nothing about changes to committees. The committees are set up by the council. The committees have to be, in my understanding, have to be changed by the council.
What, what, Megan, can you chime in here and...
It seemed, Jared and I were just discussing how these committees were set up. It, it doesn't appear that any of them were set up by resolution, mandating the specific procedures of any specific committee. And so, for example, to merge human resources with budget and finance, that would effectively be a joint meeting of budget and finance and human resources. So there's nothing that would, there's no current city council policy that precludes those two committees from meeting together. So that is, that...
In past practice, this is how we've added and removed committees.
Well, let me, let me ask the council this question. Isn't it usual that the council sets up committees?
Yes, sir. It certainly is.
That's the usual practice, is it not? And you can tell me that the council never set up these committees in the past?
I think what we...
You can, you can definitely say that. They never set these up.
Jared and I were just discussing that they've been set up by council, but it's, it sounds like they've been set up largely through this means occurring tonight. There's no specific resolution that has set up these particular committees. And so this is, as Jared was explaining, this is consistent with past practice.
If, if you want...
If the council would like to formalize the committees, that is something we certainly can do.
Well, that, that's, that's what my proposal, I think the council should formalize committees and, uh, and set up formal committees and come before the council for approval, not to just arbitrarily change committees around. For example, now this Investment Advisory Committee, that's a, that's a new committee. But I don't see anything on agenda saying we're setting up an advisory committee tonight. Because I do know an Investment Advisory Committee that the council did set up, it does specifically list the Budget and Finance Committee as members of that committee. How can you change that?
That's a good point about the Investment Advisory Committee. I, I was, I misunderstood that. I thought that that was a pre-existing committee. Um, so what I would recommend, if, if it's the council's desire to formalize committees, is to, uh, for the committee appointment for, um, budget and finance and human resources would be separately made, although they would appear to be the same people, and then they can be formalized at, through resolution at the next meeting. Um, and it would create the Investment Advisory Committee, and we'll make appointments separately for that at that time.
So the Investment Advisory Committee, because the budget and finance people were on the Investment Advisory Committee.
Yes.
That, that's the only issue we're having here, is that the current budget and finance people are not on the advisory committee. Am I correct?
Yeah, so the, so...
That's the only issue I'm seeing here.
The Investment Advisory Committee's policy states that the city's budget and finance chair shall sit on that committee.
Okay, and was that done by resolution?
No.
Okay, so we're back to where we started. Okay.
Committees have always been...
At the beginning of the year, this is what, how we establish our committees and who's on them.
Yes.
So we don't have anything in a resolution, so we can do that here, unless we want to change in the future how...
The recommendation is to receive and file the committee descriptions. If you want to get rid of a committee, get rid of a committee. If you want to establish, you want to establish one. Um, and, and it's also to approve the mayor's appointments. So if, if you do not want to, you know, remove Investment Advisory Committee and keep that under budget and finance, say so, we'll take, we'll take action one at a time, the appointments, and so be it.
Okay, so that, that's the question then, is, that's the issue then?
I think another point, you, there's a reason why you wanted to break out the Investment Advisory Committee, correct?
I mean, that's...
Well, yes, because we have outside appointments in there that do not deal with the budget and the finance. So if, if, that, that's the whole reason. There's two, there's two different groups there.
No, my, my point, I thought the entire council would have a say-so on how committees are set up. That, that, that's, that's, that's my point. I don't, I don't see I can just arbitrarily change committees.
Well, then we'll take them one at a time, and we'll take the vote right now.
But you, you can't, you can't take a vote right now because it's not on agenda.
That was my question.
Yeah.
But this is how the city's done it historically.
Is this agendized appropriately to take that action? If it is, we can vote on it now. If it isn't, then I suggest we agendize it for the next meeting. Let the mayor do her appointments as she wants to do, subject to the, to the next, uh, agenda item, and we'll, and we'll, and we'll seek to ratify it, if you will, at the next agenda.
Essentially, the creation of the IAC would not be agendized, but everything else is.
The creation of IAC.
The IAC committee, the liaison committee. That would be the only item that would not be agendized.
But why wouldn't it be agendized?
I'm just answering, I was just answering the question.
I mean, that it wasn't duly agendized for tonight?
Yeah.
Okay, and you think that the, that the termination of the Human Resources and the Town Center Committee have been agendized adequately to address them?
Yeah, the, the agendize was consideration of the 2015 City Council Committee Appointments. Absolutely.
Then perhaps we should just take a vote on that. Let's have a motion on those two.
I disagree with that, Jared. It's, it's not agendized that you're going to combine those committees. It's not agendized. The only thing that's on the agenda is about city council committee appointments.
Okay.
I would, I would, Rick, you can, you can make the appointments tonight, but it's agendized for the next meeting to straighten out the committees, is how you want to have it.
I'm really not arguing. I'm just looking for council to tell me what's properly agendaed and what isn't. I agree with you on the concept.
Why don't we, let's put the Investment Advisory Committee back up with budget and finance, and we'll just remove that. We'll put it back to what it was.
But it doesn't deal with Bill's concerns on the other committees.
It don't, exactly.
He's saying none of it's agendized properly. If council agrees, I mean, whatever council thinks on it, I'm good with.
I disagree. I think that the city's been doing this, this way.
The mayor gets a lot of sway on this, too, as we mean, for ad hoc.
Right. I, so I would, with respect to the, again, the budget and finance and the Human Resources Committees being combined, that's, we haven't eliminated either committee. We're just holding joint meetings of those committees. So they're, the same people are being appointed to it, and the, the appointments are merely being made tonight. No changes occurring to either one of those committees. With respect to the Town Center Committee, it's within the mayor's discretion to not appoint anyone to a committee. That's effectively the action that's occurring tonight. The Town Center Committee isn't, as I understand it, being permanently eliminated by this action. It's just that it is, there are no appointments being made right now because it's, there is a determination by the mayor that there is not a need for appointments to that committee at this time.
No, that's, that's, that's not the way I'm reading it. It says human resources merged with budget and finance. It doesn't say it's two committees that's meeting together, and it says Town Center Committee is not needed, so it's eliminated.
I think we're over-complicating this.
If, if you, if you, if you just do what Rick says, make the appointments tonight, set the committees for the next agenda, and straighten it out there. That's, that's all I'm asking.
I don't, I don't agree with that. I think it's here. If there is a question that you don't want the Investment Advisory Committee broken out, then we'll just put it back into budget and finance.
Well, I think we're making this too complicated.
I understand. We are.
Can we just do what we're talking about here, subject to ratification on notice at the next meeting?
That, that's, that's what, that's all I'm asking.
Just do it, subject to ratification. Proceed with the, and ratify, propose to ratify it at the next meeting. How many reasonably won't happen?
I don't understand why we would be changing the way the committees have been formed in this city.
Because there's an ambiguity, there's a dispute amongst council members, councils, even council seems to be torn on a little bit. I agree with you. I don't think it's a big deal.
She doesn't look torn to me. She's answered quite clearly.
I mean, if, if, you want to just...
This is a simple matter that's done every year that, that...
Simply because we've always done it this way does not mean that it's correct.
Well, I would like to make a motion to approve it as it is.
Second.
I, I just want a council opinion that that's, that that's appropriate?
I, as I've stated, uh, council member, I think that my interpretation of this is that no change is occurring to either the Human Resources Committee or the Town Center Committee. It's just the manner in which, uh, the appointments are being made and these meetings will be held. If the council alternatively wants to make a motion to appoint, the alternative really to this would be to appoint, uh, council members to each, each committee separately. So, for example, the Human Resources Committee would have an appointment of presumably, uh, Mayor Fasenelli and, uh, Mr. Barnett. And then at the January meeting, we can consolidate committees and create the Investment Advisory Committee as the council seems to... advisory committee as the council seems appropriate. It, it would arguably go on consent and be a very straightforward item.
Or, we can just put it back to where it was, put the investment advisory committee with budget.
We could, yeah.
And then, there's no issue.
You can put everything back where it was.
I think you should proceed, as mayor, I think you should proceed as deemed appropriate. All I'm asking is, is what we're doing appropriate? Can, do we have authority to do what we're doing tonight? And if council says yes, I intend to vote on this tonight. If council says no, I think it needs to be carried to the next meeting to be, to appropriately ratify it, then I'm going that way. So, it's real simple to me. If, if council, if you think it's appropriate, I'm going to proceed.
The Brown Act would authorize, as I interpret this document, would authorize council's vote tonight. But I've heard expression from the council, other council members, that they would like a more formalized process. And so, that is alternatively something that can be dealt with in the January vote through an agendized item.
That would be establishing the committee itself.
Yes, establishing the committee itself.
Well, there's a motion, a motion on that.
That's all I was asking for, is just to formally establish committees and not, not, right, eliminate them, but not try to do it through just assigning committees. That we should formally do it. If you want to eliminate a committee, it should be formally eliminated. But it's not on agenda to do that tonight. It's not on agenda to, to combine these two committees. No matter what council says, not, that's not, that's not what it says. It says, it says it's merged with budget and finance.
Then we will refer back to how it was. Let's put the investment advisory back into budget and finance.
Well, you, you still, your budget, your, your, your merge in budget and finance, human resource.
We're not merging anything. We're going to put it back where it was last month. This is a simple form that historically we assign committee members on. And to eliminate a town center committee that maybe, I don't know, five years ago, someone didn't put ad hoc in the back of it. I, I mean, it's silly to go through a formalized process.
It's, it's, it's not silly. That's, that's the way, that's the way things are done. They're done in a formal manner, on the agenda. When you, when you establish a committee or eliminate a committee, you do it in a formal manner, on the agenda. You don't do it, you don't do it...
All right, we're going to keep, then what I'm saying is we'll go back and keep it how it was. I'm agreeing with you, if you'd like that. We'll keep it how it was. Because I, I don't want, I, you know, you might as well keep it how it was.
Let's take them one at a time.
Let's take them one at a time.
And then, we'll come back with the cleanup item genuinely.
Well, we, we can take this, I mean, committees have to start in January to meet.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, what we have here, Orange Vector Control.
There's no change here, so there's no action.
No, okay.
Orange County Fire Authority. Barnett is director.
That is no change. The addition would be to add Councilman Nelson, so we'd need a vote on that matter.
We're going to vote on these individually?
If you wish.
We'll just take it as this.
Or we can just take it as that.
I would suggest you just make your overall, if you want to go back to where you were, that you just make whatever changes you think appropriate, and let's just vote on the whole thing.
Okay.
Simpler.
All right. Would it be appropriate then to take a recess so we could do that?
Uh, yes, ma'am.
Okay. If we could take a recess, so that could be done, and we'll come back and we'll finish this item up.
Okay.
Thank you. Give me about 10 minutes.
Nature.
Ask room.
I think...
Yep, we could do that. We'll fix it.
That's all right. All right, we're back in session. At this time, I am going to read the City Council Committee Appointments for 2015. The committees have remained the same. No committees have been added, no committees have been eliminated. And I'm going to read them one by one, and then I'll give you my handwritten note, just to make sure that you get it right here. All right, we have the Orange County Vector Control District. That's a two-year term, and that is Mr. Mills. His term expires January 2016, and as a Director, he receives $100 per month, per meeting, on that particular term. And there is no alternate on that. The Orange County Fire Authority, which meets bimonthly at 6:30. The Director is Barnett, the alternate is Councilman Nelson. You will receive $100 per meeting, not to exceed $300 per month. Orange County Sanitation District, Director is Councilman Mills, alternate is Councilman Colacott. Meet 6:30 on the fourth Wednesday of every month. Term is at the discretion of Council, which historically here has always been one year. And every meeting is $212 per meeting when you do attend. And I believe there's a cap of six meetings, if I remember correctly, on this.
Cap of how many?
I believe it's six.
Oh, six. I thought you said fifteen.
Yes. Oh, fifteen, yeah. That would have been good. Budget and Finance, Budget and Finance meets as needed. Attends the quarterly IAC meetings and annually CGPIA meeting in July. The Chair is Fassinelli, the Vice Chair is Barnett. City Schools Advisory, which meets at 9:00 a.m. on the first Monday of every other month during the school year, also attends OUSD City Schools at 5:00 p.m. on the third Monday of every month. The Director, the Chair here, is Councilman Nelson, and the alternate, or Vice Chair, I think would be the proper term, would be Councilman Colacott. Community Development and Public Safety Committee, which meets as needed. This particular meeting can meet as minimal as zero to up to four times, depending on the need of the public. And I have here the assigning Chairman to be, these are co-chairments. This is Councilman Colacott and Councilman Nelson. This is a two-chairman committee. Human Resource meets as needed. Chairman Fassinelli, and alternate is Barnett. Public Utilities and Transportation meets as needed. The Chair is Fassinelli, the Vice Chair is Councilman Nelson. Town Center Committee meets as needed. The Chair is Colacott, the Vice Chair is Councilman Nelson. City Council Liaisons, Villa Park Community Services Foundation. In the bielils, it states that the Mayor is the Chairperson and the liaison there, but they have the opportunity to assign another Councilperson. I am assigning Officer, Officer, excuse me, if you like it. Councilman Colacott and Councilman Nelson as the alternate. Orange County Libraries and Friends of the Library. I have Councilman Nelson as the Chair, and the alternate to be Councilman Mills. And I make a motion for that to be, I remove my first motion, and I make a motion for these appointments and the original committee meetings.
That's all I was asking for, and then to come back at the next meeting. And if you want to make changes to the committees, make the changes. Make them formally.
Two motions to approve the appointments as just read. Mayor Fassinelli.
Yes.
Mayor Phil Campbell.
Yes.
Councilman Colacott?
Yes.
Councilman Barnett?
Yes.
Councilman Nelson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, so now we are going to item number 13. This is a matter that Councilman Colacott has placed on the agenda, so I am going to turn it over to you.
Okay. This agenda item is for the establishment of a law enforcement committee. The highest priority of city government is law enforcement and public safety. And I'd like to begin my comments by acknowledging that Villa Park is a very safe city. We have a very low crime rate. I discussed this in some detail with Lieutenant Gunzel, and he assured me that Villa Park has a very low crime rate. But nevertheless, our residents have a zero tolerance for crime. Our residents' concerns regarding crime and crime prevention has been discussed at the past several City Council meetings, and it was the top issue raised to me by the residents during the campaign. Although our council has discussed a lot of things, like surveillance cameras and license plate readers, we've really not made any progress as a council in developing and implementing a strategic approach to enhancing our crime prevention programs. In my view, now is the time for our council to step forward to provide leadership in developing a strategic approach toward enhancing crime prevention. However, as a council, we really don't have expertise in this area. I'm not a law enforcement professional, and I don't think any of us here on the council are. Also, the council's been unable to use the existing committee structure to address crime prevention. And this agenda item proposes the establishment of a law enforcement committee. That would consist of resident law enforcement professionals. We have a number of highly trained law enforcement professionals in the city of Villa Park. Lieutenant Gunzel from the Sheriff Department, and the leaders of our Neighborhood Watch program, chaired by a City Council representative. The intent is that this committee will review crime data to assess our crime rate, monitor trends in crime, identify and evaluate alternative crime prevention measures and programs, and provide recommendations to our council and residents. In addition, the committee, consisting of law enforcement professionals, will evaluate and make recommendations to the council to reduce traffic violations. It's another area that a number of residents have expressed concerns about, which is especially speeding and folks running stop signs. The idea is that this proposal will harness the expertise of our city's resident law enforcement professionals, and I don't believe we could hire a better or more dedicated team to guide the council on this issue. This proposal, I've reviewed this proposal in developing it with a number of parties, including Lieutenant Gunzel himself. He was, told me he was 100% behind this idea. He wanted to participate in it. Resident law enforcement professionals, including Vince Rosini, who's in the audience today. Our Neighborhood Watch coordinators, and a number of other residents. In addition, our City Manager and City Attorney have reviewed the proposal on two or three occasions each to make sure that it conforms with our City Council format. The reviewers provided valuable feedback and revisions to improve the proposal. However, all of the reviewers that I've spoken with have been very supportive of the concept and look forward to participating in the committee. In particular, I did get an email from Mike Felix, who is one of our resident law enforcement professionals, and he asked me to share his comments with the council. He said, "Bob, I wish I could attend the City Council meeting on Tuesday, but as a retired law enforcement professional and a 20-year resident of Villa Park, I think this agenda item makes a lot of sense. I love Villa Park and have a vested interest in keeping this city safe. There is minimal cost to the city, and I'm sure that the committee will come up with recommendations to further increase the safety of our city. The open exchange between the council, the Orange County Sheriff Department, and residents and members of this committee can be nothing but a positive. I am on board with this proposal and offer my full support." By way of background, Mr. Felix was with the LAPD for 34 years, and since 2007, he's been a special investigator, diplomatic security, U.S. Department of State. I'd like to conclude by noting that the proposal to establish a law enforcement committee was a direct result of a challenge that I received from Brian Ferris, who spoke at our October council meeting. But while I was campaigning on Rosano, the morning after his neighbor's trailer was stolen from his driveway, Brian came out, and he was exasperated, and he, with the lack of progress on this issue, and pointedly asked what I would do as Councilman to improve crime prevention. Brian and his, I mentioned before that Brian and his wife Gretchen both spoke at our October meeting. But this is an agenda item to help work with our residents to address an issue of high concern to our residents. Thank you.
Any discussion before I open up public comment?
I'll reserve mine, I guess, and see what the public has to say.
Yeah, we'll reserve too, yeah.
All right, public comment? If anybody would like to step up to the podium and speak on this issue?
Good evening. My name is Vincent Rosini. I am a recent resident to Villa Park, by all standards. But it's been a dream of mine to live here for quite a long time, because I do believe it is a hidden jewel. I'm a true Californian, born and raised, educated. I've had the distinct pleasure and honor of being in public service for over a decade, and a law enforcement professional for a decade. Have an undergraduate degree from USC and a master's degree from the same university. The reason why I'm standing before you today is to just express my desire to serve the community. Mayor Fassinelli, councilmembers, staff, and residents, Lieutenant. At the council's behest and pleasure, I would like just to sit here and share just a few thoughts that I have about this committee. This committee is really just here to assist the Sheriff's Department in what they do. This is really an added tool to help the council. As far as giving recommendations to help the Sheriff's Department, we have a number of residents, as Councilmember Colacott mentioned, that do live here, who have quite a few years of experience in different aspects of law enforcement. And I think that we can bring perhaps a local resident feel to things and really assist the Sheriff's Department in taking a look at trends and taking a look at a resident perspective on things, and assisting the council with perhaps some law enforcement common sense, things that perhaps are not necessarily common sense for the average citizen, and working to identify problems that exist in the community, whether it's traffic, or whether it's crimes against persons, crimes involving property. And I just wanted to express my concern, at the same time, my support. I think Villa Park is a very safe community, but I think that this committee, with the council's support, can make it that much safer and hopefully put those crimes a little bit lower, year over year. I think that Orange County Sheriff's Department's done an excellent job. I think the stats spell that out. But I think that we can do our part and help them reduce those stats just a little bit lower. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mary Solzell, 18202 Montana Circle in Villa Park. My husband Wayne and I, as you know, have recently revitalized the Neighborhood Watch program in Villa Park. We're pleased to report that we have almost 75 block captains now actively participating. And I just want to explain that the program that is being proposed is actually one that has been in effect under the Volunteers in Police Service, VIPS, program since 2002, whereby the sheriffs and police chiefs across the country have encouraged this type of volunteer participation to assist in crime prevention. In fact, some years ago, probably, I don't know, eight, nine years ago, when we were building the CERT program in Villa Park, we had a CERT Awareness, Citizen Core Awareness Fair, and VIPS appeared at that time and gave a presentation. And we were in hopes that the city would pursue a volunteer law enforcement program at that time, which did not materialize. To give you an idea of what other cities have done, and this is something that is widespread across the country, you can go on to the VIPS website and read a great deal about it. I happened to pull down some information about three of the cities that have very successful programs, one being Herndon, Virginia. And this is what they list as the activities that their law enforcement volunteer program undertakes. They educate citizens on crime prevention and their responsibilities to reduce crime. They provide specialized crime prevention training, promoting the formation of Neighborhood Watch and Business Watch programs as needed. The council also provides safety training, educates the community about gang activity, and works with the community regarding neighborhood safety. Through the work of the program in Herndon, they were able to build 14 effective Neighborhood Watch programs. Other Neighborhood Watch participants act as eyes and ears to help prevent crime throughout the city. They receive training on how to recognize criminal activities and how to work with the police to eliminate criminal activities in their neighborhoods. Neighborhood Watch volunteers have organized to maintain current records and to ensure that neighborhood programs remain active. And on a weekly, monthly, and yearly basis, in some of the cities, they have formatted a map, which shows and delineates the types of crimes occurring in what neighborhoods. And then this is made available through Neighborhood Watch and through the law enforcement volunteer program to residents, and is also posted on the city website, all designed to help keep the neighborhoods and the citizens aware of what our law enforcement is doing, and to have the volunteer program assist. So based upon what we have been trying to do with Neighborhood Watch, what CERT was attempting to do initially, this sounds like a wonderful culmination to the efforts, and I support it completely, and I'm very glad it's come before the council.
I belong to her, at 18202 Montana Circle, Wayne Solzell. I just wanted to bring you up to date on the home security fair that we're going to host. Neighborhood Watch people will be hosting it right here in City Hall on January the 7th. And is it 7 to 9, or? I couldn't remember. It was 5 to 7, 7 to 9. 7 to 9, January 7th. And I've been, it's interesting, I have been calling, I think I've called a dozen different purveyors of home security equipment, from alarms to cameras, recording devices. And I have four that I have settled on thus far. The interesting thing is, many of the firms, one of them went broke and changed its name to another company, and they're back in business again. So I have found a screener to find out who the people are, because if we have them here, we expect them to provide reliable service with warranty and all that. So there was, I didn't think of that risk, that we might have some shenanigan in here that was going to get some business and then skip town. So I just want you to know that there are a number of companies out there, and you want to do some shopping if you do it on your own, because get some background on them. While they can get a license and may be certified, they may not be qualified. But it's coming along fine. Those that we have invited and confirmed are excited about it. And we'll have, if we only have four, there will be a booth here by one of the firms, ADT, and they will offer fingerprinting and photographing for children in order to identify, have their names recorded in case of kidnapping or some disappearance. It's voluntary for the citizens that want to do it. It's not, nothing regimented here. But there's also a wide variety of equipment that's available that does contain chips in the cameras to record when the camera is tripped by motion. The information goes into the computer chip, and it can be accessed by law enforcement if they need it. On a voluntary basis, the citizens would be expected to provide that. So technology has really taken hold here, and I think there's some inexpensive equipment that will be shown. So I urge people to come. I think they'll enjoy it. And yes, I agree, we're working with the Sheriff's Department to provide them information, and are grateful for their help, and Jared's been very helpful, so we appreciate that. And I think the combination of this committee and Neighborhood Watch, the vigilance that will be shown will hold our crime rate down and hopefully even reduce it. I want to add that one of the problems we have in the high school are gangs. The restrooms are being taken over by gangs, and some of the children are afraid to use them. It isn't, we've heard about the poor condition of the restrooms, but in addition to fixing that, we do need to get some monitoring and get, and we need cooperation from the school district. Do you monitor those restrooms so they're safe, and that the kids can use them so they don't suffer illness from holding back till they get home? So that's an area I think that we need to, if you have a city school liaison committee, I would put that at the top of your list. It's very important, in addition to solving the traffic issue. So that's one issue that can help us, because a lot of crime occurs at the high school. With only 9% of Villa Park's residences at the high school, the rest come from out of the city. We have an issue that we can't really know who all the children are, because they come here from various areas. That's the issue with the high school, and I think I'll just close at that, because there are other issues in the community, locking their doors, windows. That kind of goes without saying. But if your neighbor's watching next door, maybe your trailer will stay in the backyard where it belongs.
Boo.
Wayne, was that Wednesday, January 7th at 7?
Yes.
7:00 p.m.?
7:00 p.m., 7 to 9.
Mayor Fassinelli, councilmembers, I'm Donna Buxton, 9512 Dodson Way. I'm not in law enforcement. From what I understand, I make a mean tray of cookies.
Thank you again, just putting him through the fire truck window.
Greg's lobbying for fried chicken next year.
That's right, I was lobbying for fried chicken next year.
I just want to state that I think we have nothing but a benefit in creating this committee and taking advantage of the skills and talents of residents of Villa Park who want to serve and contribute. Thank you. Seeing that there is no other public comment, we're going to bring it back to council. And who would like to start?
If the mayor will allow me, I'd like to kind of trail at the latter part, just so I could kind of...
Want to hear what everyone else has to say first?
Yeah, I kind of want to do that.
Okay.
I'll go first.
Okay. We'd like to hear what you have to say first.
No, I think it's an excellent idea. I'm for anything that's going to help to, for crime prevention here. I just did have one question. Would this be a standing committee or ad hoc committee? Sounds more like an ad hoc.
It's proposed as a standing committee. I think the issues of crime prevention and law enforcement are an ongoing issue.
Ongoing, okay.
You know, in the future, if it, you know, we determine that there's not a need, you know, if crime rate goes down that far. But, you know, our residents have zero tolerance for crimes, though.
Well, I think it's really an excellent idea, and if we do establish it, it will be one established by the council.
Yes. My only thought on this, I mean, the approach is fine. I think that it goes under the CDC committee, and that would be the major activities. It's all coordinated. Because that's got to do with all of our CUPs, everything else. It's all run through that committee. And Bob, you're head of that already, and this could be established as a part of it, no problem. It would be ad hoc underneath that. And I think this is an excellent idea, the organization that you've already got and everyone else that's addressed this. One thing we do worry about, of course, how much staff time is this going to take? Not too much, from what I've read. Not too much at all. I know that Jared and everybody's looked at this, so... I think this would be an excellent thing, to have this, the committee, report on this every month and see how the stats go down. Plus, I'd like to see how the schools' crime breaks out from the general town as well. I think that's something we need to look at. I think you brought up some excellent points, Wayne. So that's my thought on it. I don't know if it needs to be a separate standing committee. I think it could be a standing committee within one that exists. I just, that's just my opinion of it, but...
We have a Community Development and Public Safety Committee. We already have a committee that deals with these issues, which, yes, coincidentally, you will be chairing that committee. When I read this, and I did read it in detail, a lot of the items that are in here, the council's already dealt with, such as license plate readers and surveillance systems, and we've spent hours and hours already going over these. The Neighborhood Watch program is a great program. I again say it's not a city-sponsored program, though. And I think that we need to be cautious as a council and as a city when we put non-sponsored city programs together, that we make sure that we monitor them. We just had an incident of an individual's home being broken into. And the private information that was given to the Neighborhood Watch groups was disseminated through the city. So we had all of our residents know what happened, what was taken from their house, how it was taken. The gentleman who lived there... The gentleman who lived there was not happy. He, his privacy had been, his wife's privacy, his privacy, everything had been stolen from him, including the items that everyone took. And not everyone got that information, only the Neighborhood Watch people got that information. So the block captains didn't disseminate it to even their own neighbors, so I'm not quite sure why the information went over. But those are items that we, that came up. We tried something new and something bad happened. I think the committee, in my opinion, is a great committee, but we have it. It's under public safety and it just needs to be incorporated in that. The traffic issues, the school issues, those are under the city schools advisory and community development. That's where, that's where all that is dealt with. As far as crime at school goes, that's dealt with, again, with the city schools. I do have a question for you, Lieutenant Gunzle. It's my understanding there is not, there is not a known gang in Villa Park. And I want to make...
That is correct.
Excuse me?
That's, in Villa Park, that's correct.
Yeah, in the city of Villa Park, we do not have any, we do not have a known gang. And I am, I'm aware of that. As far as crime from people that come in from outside the city, well, you know, we're a small city. I just don't think we need another committee to deal with this. I think we can deal with this with our public safety committee as is. And I would just watch how much time we need to spend with our officers. You know, we have a very lean budget, they charge by the hour. If we're going to be interviewing assigned deputies, they're going to charge us. And that means they're not going to be out in their car, driving around, and Councilman Barnett's going to be upset because he's not putting any mileage on his car. So I, and I, I'm just trying to be funny here, but we only have a couple deputies. So to take that time there is a concern. I just think we've already have a committee for this.
Would you like me to respond?
No. Thank you.
Okay. I like the idea. I think it's a great idea. I think it'll have a lot of support. I've had a lot of community members express concern over it. It's unfortunate they don't show up in the meetings, a very small group that comes to the council meetings, but you get on the public, you hear a whole bunch of it. I think it's a great idea. I like the structure. Whether it's structured as an ad hoc committee or whether it's structured as an ongoing committee, to me, doesn't make a lot of difference. But I like Councilman Colacott's approach. I think he's taken a lot of time to lay it out. I heard your comments regarding some of the things reviewed. But frankly, I don't think they really got that much review before council. You can't really do adequate review in here. There's just not enough time and focus. It needs to be something you can really sit down and grind into and have the appropriate people there. And I think this is a better way to do it and then have them, you know, present to council. So bottom line is, I fully support it, whether it's an ad hoc committee or whether it's an ongoing standing committee, to me, that doesn't make a lot of difference unless, you know, Councilman Colacott has a particular concern as to that issue. And if he does, I'd be happy to listen to that and perhaps take a position on it. But I just think it makes sense regardless of how the, whether it's an ad hoc or a standing committee.
I have a question here though, is that we do have a public safety committee already. So how would we handle that?
Well, I had an idea on that. I see this as very much like the investment advisory committee, because you have outside people on this rather than just two council members. In our community development, public safety committee, it's just two council people on it. They could be the ones that could sit on this committee. You know, just like you had the budget and finance people sitting on the investment advisory committee. And you bring in an outside law enforcement experts from the community, just like you bring outside investment experts from the community. I see it as the same way.
And would they, through a formal application like the investment advisory committee, they would submit an application through the city?
Yes.
Be reviewed and be appointed?
Submit an application and have resident, resident law enforcement professionals on it.
Mayor, they...
You're getting law enforcement professionals to volunteer their time to provide us information on crime prevention. And you could have the community development, public safety members sit on this committee.
Bill hit it right on the head. The model for this was the investment advisory committee, the idea, and the idea is that I think law enforcement is something they would really need to elevate and specifically identify, you know, separate from community development. It's a, I think, the number one issue on the minds of our residents.
That's the number one issue? Okay. Any further comment?
Well, I concur with, with the mayor that this falls right under public safety and a lot of the items that we have reviewed in the past for the, for the public safety and community development have gone around, traffic, safety, things like that. I think it's, you can elevate it on the committee, myself. And you can call it another name if you like. But I think it falls underneath that committee. I don't see why we have to have another separate committee established. But I agree that the, the public, of course, is invited already to the community development and public safety meetings already. They are open meetings, they are, they are agendized every time, so it's an official meeting.
And you get a lot of people at it.
And we do get a lot of people at it. And I think the application to this committee is a great idea, that the folks that are involved are basically vetted and can be real contributors. I think that's a great idea. That's, that's my only thing. I just don't know whether we need another committee, separate committee, when we have one already that's established that can handle this right now. Because we've done a lot of work of eliminating a lot of the CDC work itself as far as the CUPs with Jennifer, a lot of that is now a lot more streamlined and this would be a perfect thing to annex into it, much more forceful as Bob is suggesting.
How do we handle if that, how do we handle the outside members if it's the community development and public safety committee?
Right, exactly.
Just, what do you mean?
I don't, there's no provision on this for, I'm aware of, for outside members.
We can add, because in the next meeting, we're going to be redefining some of these anyway.
We are?
Well, I mean, as far as you're, you're going to make a, make a formal motion on all these different committees that are on here.
No, we're not. We referred it, we...
I thought we were going to have...
I thought we were going to bring it back and...
Yes.
I thought we were talking about agendizing a procedure...
Procedure.
At the next meeting, so we knew how to do it in the future, with my understanding.
To make, to make a committee.
But that won't...
Or whether it's ad hoc or not, or whatever. Yeah.
That would structure how committees are formed, but you know, it seems to me, I like the structure. I like bringing the outside people. I like what they've done.
I do too.
In fact, we had some discussion before, I had a little initial involvement in this with, with, with Councilman Colacott. So I like the outside people on it, so it seems to me, it's either going to have to be an ad hoc committee with them on it, or I don't know how, you have to restructure the community development and public safety committee so as to put outside people on it?
If you like the structure, the law enforcement committee as proposed with the resident law enforcement members, you have to establish it as a committee. Or else the community development committee and public safety is just the two council members. So it would be similar to IAC. The way that I'm following is, you know, make a motion to establish the law enforcement committee as proposed. And rather than naming a said chair and vice chair for this committee...
You just put the...
The chair and vice chair would be that of the community development and public safety committee.
That's, that's...
In this case, Councilman Colacott and Nelson.
Yeah.
That's the way I see it.
Yeah.
And then when they do that, then we would open up the application process to the residents?
Yes, once it's established.
Sixty days and, you know, bring it in and it comes back to council.
Perfect.
Counsel will make appointments.
Yeah, that doesn't resolve the ad hoc standing issue though, does it?
Well, no, you can, you can make it a standing committee or an ad hoc committee. It's just how do you want, if...
It's already a standing committee.
I'm, I'm just, well, I'm just trying to, but now they're talking about essentially another committee.
It's a new committee.
And I know that there's concern on council, I'm just trying to kind of be a peacemaker here. I know that there's concern about another committee, and I'm thinking it might be easier if we're put together as an ad hoc, see how it plays out, get the big work done and then monitor it and see where it goes. And if that makes it easier for two of our council members and you, and the other council members don't have a problem with it, I would certainly support that.
I would support that.
I think that we just need to, we would have to decipher what goes to the community development and public safety. There are issues that go to that committee that won't go to your committee. And they're from residents. And we'll have to know when a resident comes up, where are they going to go? So...
It's a planning related area, that would just be CDC.
Sure, right.
Wouldn't call it a law...
Exactly, well, exactly, but that needs to, that would need to be, that needs to be established.
It's not complicated.
It's no different the way the investment advisory committee works now.
I understand.
No different at all. You don't, you don't call it investment advisory committee when you have a budget meeting.
You care whether it's an ad hoc or a...
Is it an ad hoc or is it a standing committee?
Well, you can make it either one.
As, right, it can be either one. For Brown Act purposes, it's effectively going to be considered a standing committee because it's going to have agendized notices in public meetings as we've, as it's been described.
Perfect.
Whether the council wants to have some limited duration for it, to let it go on until, to be reviewed at some further time, how it wants, how it's to be structured is at the discretion of the council.
Megan, why does it have to be a standing committee? Just so I understand.
For Brown Act purposes, the way that it's currently structured with council members and citizens participating, that makes it a Brown Act committee.
That makes it a standing committee?
Effectively makes it a standing committee. For our purposes.
But the public safety already is a standing committee.
Yes.
Okay.
It's already is one.
So that's why, just use that vehicle, that's all I'm saying.
Because you, you...
You cannot have the outside people in that. Neighborhood Watch and law enforcement members. They would not be two, they would not be true participants of the committee, they would just be public participants.
Well, that's what they would be anyway with this, correct?
No, 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 it's not.
No, here they have to apply.
No, you, you, when, when, when you're on these, these committees, you have to, you have to fill out a form, 700, you're considered an official of the city.
Oh.
If you're just an outside person, you don't do that.
I, you know, I think I, my, my suggestion here is, I, I read this in detail and I didn't take that into consideration either. I would like to give the public an opportunity to review this. I think this is good. There's nothing but good that comes out of this.
Very, very good, Bob.
Everything that would come out of this is good, but I'd like to give the public the opportunity to review this agenda item when it's not Christmas and, you know, holiday time right now. I don't know, I mean, our, there's nobody here and normally we do have more people than that. Maybe bring it to their attention and see if they have anything to offer also. That's just my suggestion.
I, for one, would like to get it going, so if, if we're there, I'd make a motion to, to move, to move this item. I, I think, I would, I'd like to get the crime prevention going. I've been sitting behind this for a long time and I really like to move it, so I, you know, if...
So do we open up applications for 60 days for people to apply? I mean, we have to give...
Fifteen, thirty, forty days.
It's the, it's the holidays, we need to be fair.
There's a procedure to establish this right now. I mean, this, there's going to be a public hearing and everything, right? We're going to do all that. This just doesn't happen.
I mean, we need to give people the opportunity to learn about it, come in and apply, then they've got to be interviewed by the two people who are heading the committee before they bring them up to, to council.
We can open it up for the end of December and halfway through January, so maybe a 30-day timeframe. And then in January, when we appoint the foundation IAC members, we can appoint the law enforcement members as well.
That'd be a good time.
Yeah. What if we just put it all the way through January? Then you've got a little time, because the holidays are going to be a little...
The holidays, people are gone. School doesn't even get back, the parents don't even come back into school to...
What happens if you don't get an applicant, then you would extend the time.
Yeah.
That's what will happen.
I think we'll get applicants.
So essentially if we postpone it again, that's another 30 days, that's just time lost.
Yeah.
I'd like to second the motion and my, my comment is, is that, you know, taking off what Rick said, is that there's a lot of exasperation out there that, you know, when are we going to do something about this problem? And that's, that's what Brian Ferris challenged me with a couple of months ago.
Yeah, I think it's time, I think it's time to move on. I got a nasty, well, not nasty, I got a frustrated email from a robbed resident and I understand it, you know, the bureaucracy of government at this level, we should be able to move pretty quickly, so...
I live in this city unafraid, so I, I think the majority of our residents do and I hate to put, I like this and I want this, but let's not put fear in our residents also. I mean, I think it's a good city to, to live in.
I mean, the way this sounds right now, it sounds like we're, we're just deluged with crime here. And that's just not the case at all.
I think we got a motion in the second though, don't we?
We're making comment now, yeah.
Say my comment after the second. So the motion is?
As I understand it, to establish a law enforcement committee as proposed and then name the community development committee and public safety committee members the council representatives to the committees. That would be Councilman Colacott as chair and Councilman Nelson as vice chair. And then between now and mid-January, we'll advertise for appointments, for appointments for the resident committee members back at the January meeting, unless we do not receive any applications.
Right, then you'll extend it.
And the resident committee members, that is also the homeowners watch? Who are the other people on the committee?
As proposed, it was two members of city council, one to serve as chair, in this case, it would be Councilman Colacott and Nelson, Neighborhood Watch coordinators.
Which is who?
The Sizels.
Okay.
And then the supervising chairs department lieutenant, so Lieutenant Gunzle.
So the Sizels would be appointed also?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so they would come, they would come up for appointment, for appointment?
Essentially, they're appointed as part of the establishment structure.
I think it's one from the Neighborhood Watch, as I recall, I mean...
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, one Neighborhood Watch and...
Chair.
Okay, and then they're...
And three to five resident law enforcement professionals.
Okay, and that'd be residents as well?
Yes.
Yeah, we, we went through this.
We've got, want to make sure.
Resident law enforcement.
Only.
Well, the IAC is not residents, so it's different.
Yes.
And the application to apply says that there's supposed to be residents and they're not, so...
I have, I have this one comment, could we make, could we make this an advisory committee?
Yes.
The title of an advisory...
Advisory in the...
Advisory committee.
Law enforcement advisory committee?
Okay.
Yes.
It's Bob's name.
The reason, well...
What would you like it named?
Because any official action would have to come to the council anyway.
Correct, it's, it's already advisory in its nature.
Just make recommendations to the council and then the council will take any action.
I was just thinking more in terms of other, other committees already formed. I mean, there is a time element involved too, because this is going to be detailed. Obviously, Bob's got it well thought out, so...
Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
Mayor, can I make one additional comment, please?
Yes.
And Mr. Colacott and I discussed it, from my perspective, and Mr. Mills brought it up, there is a problem with messaging. And this committee could have a, a positive impact on that. You know, everyone thinks there's a crime wave going on, you know, my experience is different. So I think if we do have a committee that could help that, actually change that around, so...
Vote?
Ready for a vote?
Yeah.
Councilman Barnett?
Yes.
Councilman Colacott?
Yes.
Councilman Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Fasenelli?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay.
Thank you.
We're at item, mayor and council member, oh no, items, we have one more item. It's my agenda.
There's nothing here.
It is Councilman Colacott?
Yeah. Yeah, unable to attend, she's going to make a presentation on the status of the, their conversation. Okay, oh, okay.
Okay, good evening, Donna Buxton, nine five one two Dodson Way. I don't think I need to remind anyone that we've had a history of problems and concerns about the traffic and safety surrounding our schools along Serrano Avenue. The current effort with the Protecting the Hidden Jewel group is going very well. We have probably the broadest group of participants in our group that I've ever known of in the history of this issue that continues to come before you. We have OUSD, the city of Villa Park, including city staff and police representation, the city of Orange, the residents of the Protecting the Hidden Jewel group, and parent faculty leadership from Serra Villa and Serrano schools. The, um, the effort is very positive, we're making progress. We have done a traffic study that was submitted in November, and we've done a very detailed analysis of exactly what's happening around those schools, and a copy of that was submitted to Jared last month. Our next meeting is January twelfth, and we will start looking at which solutions we intend to pursue. And so, we're, we're looking forward with great anticipation to seeing some solutions come forward and to continue to move this to resolution, or at least to some significant improvement for our community, and we're very excited and eager to have your support in the process. Thank you. Any questions for me?
Mayor, what, what time is your meeting on the twelfth?
I believe it's at nine AM. And put the, OUSD facility on handy.
Okay. At Mr. Christians's office?
In one of the board meetings there, yeah, board rooms. Anything else?
I, I'd just like to, to comment that it's very interesting what happens when you empower the affected parties to address the issues. This has been here for years, with this council shaking their heads, really trying to figure out what to do, and it essentially got delegated to some extent to the affected parties, and they're meeting directly, and it's just amazing that, that the change of tone, and, and I'm thrilled.
Well, thank you, and I think that the city was looking to the council to do something, but really, we just needed some people to really get all affected and involved parties together, and so, it's finally happening, and we're very hopeful that we'll be able to start to see some changes that will improve the safety in those areas.
Have some involvement, the frustration level just drops like a rock, and that's what you were dealing with before.
Mm-huh.
Now, you've got the communication, so I think that's great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we're up to individual council members' information and required meeting attendance. Is there anything you'd like to say, Mr. Nelson?
Uh, yes, I have an item I'd like for a future agenda. How's that?
Perfect.
I'd like for a future agenda, I'd like to bring you a proposal about having monthly financial reports on the agenda, on the regular agenda, with year-to-date performance versus the budget, with explanation of variances, and, and a status of capital projects. And I'd like to work with Michelle on how I'd like for the reports to be structured. I'd like to put that on agenda and bring it to your next meeting.
Okay.
And we've all got the right to agendize any item, so that's probably-
Yeah, I believe, any, do we need, is it a second, Jared? You had mentioned putting items on agenda, according to the code, we need a second for that? And these two council members?
I don't think so.
Do we what?
I don't know.
No, no, he, he, he had, you had read me the code.
No, it, the, Villa Park's policy is any council member can agendize a matter at any time.
I understand that.
Oh, okay.
No, I understand that, okay.
Well, I, I don't- You can just put that on.
You're just asking ahead of time.
Yeah, you're just asking ahead of time.
I just, I just thought it was appropriate to ask, you know, if I should take up staff time doing something like that.
Well, is it through the budget and finance committee? Don't we get, don't we get it, and we can just include it in that?
Are you asking to work with us between now and then?
Between now and the next one, to prepare the reports the way I think they should look.
To spend Michelle's time in preparing the monthly reports as Councilman Nelson envisions it?
Put it up here on the board.
Right, and put it up, put it up here on the board, and with explanation of the variances.
They're going to be different than the, what's presented to the budget and finance, so it'll be different reports?
Well, it could be the same thing you get. I don't, I don't know what you get now.
Sounds good.
Because I'm, I'm, I'm seeing, I saw last month, you had something on, on the agenda, I believe.
Sounds good.
But previous ones, you had nothing on the agenda, on financial reports.
Yeah, we had a-
We had a time, there was a timing issue on that, yeah, the council was notified of that.
No, I'm, I'm not talking about on this one, I understand it, I'm saying you had it on the last agenda, but I didn't see one on previous agendas, previous to that.
Monthly, the city council approves the treasurer's report.
Yeah.
Never before have we included Michelle's financial variance report.
Right.
That was only included based off previous discussions with Councilman Nelson.
Mm-hmm.
He just wants to adjust that monthly financial report a bit, include a, a monthly budget variance, I believe, in a status of capital projects.
We did that vector control already, I mean, that's standard.
Yeah, you, you, a standard of vector control, right? It's so, I just think it should be a standard report here on the regular agenda where-
Not on consent, on the regular-
Not, right, on, not on consent, but on the regular agenda, where-
Well, we can talk about that and vote on that next month, right, when it's on the agenda.
Yeah.
We'll bring it back when agenda-
Bring it agenda item.
Yeah.
Bring it back as agenda item, you can review it and decide to do it or not do it.
Sure, that's good.
That's, that's all I'm asking, but I will need some staff time to, to work with staff to do that the next one. So, I thought it was appropriate that I talked to you about using the staff time beforehand.
Do you have this time in the next thirty days? Look at that.
There you go.
You got the, you got the nod, Bill.
Okay.
She controls money.
I got to go ahead.
Yes.
Hey, I don't, I don't need you guys' approval. I got to, I got to-
You got the nod.
Why, why, why am I talking to you guys, anyway?
Uh, Mr. McCollough, Councilman McCollough, do you have anything?
I have nothing to report.
Okay, all right, so.
I didn't even make, was, couldn't make the last fire authority meeting, and Brad covered it, so I don't have anything to report. I do have a question, though, Megan. Does this have to be reported if it's city money or if it's compensated anywhere?
It's, under AB 1234, it's, you're supposed to report for items that you're reimbursed by the city.
The city.
Right. That's, you're required to do that before you can receive your reimbursement. You're required to report at a, at a public meeting, but for, for meetings that you attend for which you've been appointed by the council, it's recommended that you would report on them to advise your camp, fellow council members as to what's occurred at that meeting.
So, it's recommended that I report to keep them up to date, it's mandated if the city's spending money.
Exactly.
And that's what I do. If there's a significant event, I report it, if there isn't, I don't, so, okay, I'm safe.
Thank you. Yes, first of all, I'd like to talk about the Santa, the Santa tour on Saturday, I think it was a big success.